All right. Welcome to a meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, January 6, 2015. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and that's in reference to Board Policy 8340. Good evening. Let's start with our work session agenda, which is the review of the district's performance data. Dr. Dietrich, why don't you start off?
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. This evening, we do have a PowerPoint presentation. It is a lot of slides. I think it's approximately 65 slides. And what you're going to see would represent the data that we, as an administrative cabinet, monitor. At every cabinet meeting, we meet once a week as an administrative cabinet, those central office administrators closest to me as superintendent. We meet every Thursday, and at each meeting, I open the meeting with a discussion of progress towards our goals, and also a discussion of our core values, and discuss any situations where individuals might be shining stars, and we should recognize and talk about that, or, conversely, situations where perhaps people fell short, or a program isn't going like it should, and we should monitor and adjust. When we talk about progress towards goals, we always talk about any possible data we should be monitoring. That would include some things that we would term as dashboard indicators, where we can monitor and make adjustments mid-course stream. There are also data points that we look at once a year and make adjustments in as we provide our planning for the upcoming year. So we're going to walk you through that tonight. It's not our intention this evening to go into a lot of detail on the slides. We certainly will answer any questions that you have, and don't hesitate to ask those questions as we move through the presentation. But more importantly, keep in mind this data, and if you're interested in pursuing it in greater detail at a committee meeting, I would suggest that you talk to the committee chair, or the administrative liaison to the committee, and we'll get it on as a committee item so that we can pursue it in much more detail. But once again, if you do have any questions this evening, as we move, don't hesitate to ask those questions, but more importantly, keep in mind that this might be fertile ground for discussion at committee meetings. So with that, I do have members of our administrative cabinet that we moved up to the tables to talk about them. We also have in the audience other members of the administrative cabinet, Dr. Betty Santoro, Dr. Tony Butts, Dr. Deb McKay are in the audience. And then with us this evening in speaking would be Dr. Robin Lutcher, our Director of Technology, Jenna Ruffa, our Director of Special Education and Student Services, Christine Liberowski, our Director of Community Engagement, and Dr. Holman, our Assistant Superintendent, will be speaking also. Steve Scrocky had a lot of slides. We cut all of Steve's slides.[203.12][203.12](Laughter). And Steve's slides, we will see as a part of our budget discussions as we move through budget season. So there are a lot of data points we collect on budget, but Steve got cut for tonight because of the number of slides we have. We will do his slides when we look at our budget. So with that, we'll start with the first slide, and I think this is Christine's.
This slide just talks about some of the things that we track. And you see, I talk about press releases on Twitter and YouTube on here. Our press releases are 26, which may seem low because we're really focusing in different areas. We tweet a lot of our information out. It saves us time. The information can get out there quickly. Our Twitter and Facebook accounts continue to grow with views and followers. Social media has really expanded this year, and it's an extremely powerful platform to get the information out quickly, and it grows exponentially as people share our information. We were extremely proud of our use of it in garnering feedback concerning closing for school, what days to close, I'm sorry, how to change the calendar for next school year, and also when we were deciding what days to make up because of the snow last year.
So you can see there, we have 3,480 followers as of December of 2014 on Twitter. If you're watching at home, please follow us on Twitter. We've tweeted 1,391 times.
You tweeted some of those times, too, Dr. Dietrich.
I did.
YouTube, you'll see, we also have many followers there. Everything that we produce for North Penn Television, everything we cover, is on our YouTube channel. So even if you're not in the North Penn community, or on vacation, you can watch all of our channels, all of our shows there. This is about our website traffic. We average 13,000 visitors with over 35,000 page views on our website every day. The busiest time for our website is during back-to-school season. During that time, we average 30,000 visitors who visit over 200,000 pages each day. Snow days are our biggest days for the website. One snow day last year brought in 60,000 visitors and 126,000 page views. I want to remind our advertisers out there, too, that's a good day to advertise with North Penn.[337.84][337.84](Laughter). We just track our write-to-know requests, the time that goes into it, the number of requests that we're filling. It's important that we be as transparent as we possibly can, so this shows you, over the years, our work there. Extended school care, as you know, we talked last year about enrollment on the downside there. We made some changes this coming school year, and not only to our price structure, but also we marketed it more heavily. We really went after our students, and you can see the trend is going up. We're very happy about that.
Okay, those are slides from Christine. We'll go to Tom, and everybody, you should have a handout at your table also, if you wanted to kind of look at that, and if you wanted to mark up any for future discussion at a committee meeting. Tom, you want to talk about the work order turnaround time? Okay, this one's a little bit different order, but go ahead.
Okay. This slide shows a comparison of the percent expenditure of Support Services Department as compared to the overall budget. It compares it to the Montgomery County average, the state average, and also Montgomery County high and low. North Penn is averaging lower than the county average, the state average, and well below the high of the county. So as a percentage of the overall budget, we're averaging somewhere around 7%. This is identical information, but it also shows it in a smokestack format, showing all the school districts in the county, and the bright pink area is North Penn. So you can see the trend is a downward trend from 2009, '10 through and including 2013, '14.
So it's important for us, as we monitor that, to make sure that we have our primary focus being on instruction and trying to reduce our support service expenditures as a percent of the total expenditures.
Tom, could you tell me which committee oversees your operations?
The Support Services Committee?
Who chairs that committee?
Mr. Schilling?
Is that what you want me to ask?[478.12][478.12](Laughter).
This is identical information as the last two slides, but shown in a different format. A lot of, during discussions with facilities managers around the state, they seem to think that the percentages of Support Services would drop as the overall budget would increase. But as you can see, it's actually inverse to that, and smaller budgets typically have a higher percentage. So North Penn is well below the average and the trend in the county. This slide shows a five-year comparison of the historic work order turnaround time. Again, the bright pink is this year. As you can see, it was well above the average in previous years in August, September, and started to decline in November and December. The reason for that was the increased project load over the course of the summer, moving Hatfield and doing camera projects in the two schools. But we got it under control once those projects were completed. This is identical information on work order turnaround time, but it also shows the median. The median being 50% of the work orders above the green line and 50% below. So as a median, we have a very good turnaround time below our goal, which is in the dash line. So we are, the median for all of our work orders is approximately eight, seven to eight days. And the reason for the average being so high was a host of long-term backorder projects and work orders, which, again, got cleared up in November and continuing in December. This shows the number of work orders received versus closed. The closed work orders are the dark blue lines, and it's very typical for us to receive an extreme amount of work orders in September and October, when the first couple months of school, and then they get under control through the course of the year. And this is a slide which we call wrench time. This is the percentage of actual hours spent on the job versus travel time, paperwork time, ordering time, and actually, you know, getting to the project. So you can see our wrench time declined slightly, and you're going to see that increase over the course of the winter. We watch this very closely because we want to have it below that 75% line. We want it to be above the 75% line as much as possible. As you can see, we are well below, and we're going to work on that to increase the productivity of the crew. On a monthly basis, we do an indoor air quality survey of the buildings, and in, again, in August and September, those numbers dropped because we had staffs spread around the district. But in October and November, the numbers came up to our goal line. We, on a monthly basis, review the certain conditions in the schools, operating equipment, to ensure that the indoor air quality is good quality in our schools. Also, we do a cleaning survey to ensure that the cleaning process is quality in our schools, and it is typical that, as the school year goes on, the quality drops off, and then, in the beginning of the year, after the summer, the indoor cleaning quality has increased. So we track this on a monthly basis to ensure that the schools are in good condition.
Okay, that'll take care of Tom's slides. I do apologize that the documents at your table are slightly different order. I realize now that the one that's up, being projected right now, might be just a little bit older version. We had made a couple changes this afternoon to try to slim down this presentation because it was so long, and I'm not sure. We may get to a couple slides that were removed, but I'll deal with that as we get to it. But the next one is interviews by year, and Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dietrich. This demonstrates the number of interviews conducted by various members of our administrative team within the district for support of our instructional aspects in the district regarding our professional staff, our instructional support staff, and administrative teams within the district. You can see, over time, it demonstrates a level of stable growth for us in terms of the number of interviews required to maintain the positions that we have within the district.
If you go way back, there was a time we were doing more hiring, but then we hit a time period in the economy, we were living with vacancies, and weren't doing as many interviews. Now we're going back kind of steady, but going up a little bit again.
This slide really portrays our retention rate, which, to us, is a symbol of stable and the strength and quality of our workforce in terms of longevity and the amount of people staying on board here in North Penn. Both the green lines indicating administrators, red are professionals, and our green is the support staff demonstrated over the years, all, each of which is riding above a 90% level, which is outstanding for strength and quality of our workforce and the professionals that we have. Our student to professional staff ratio is indicative or demonstrating of all of our professional staff employed, and not necessarily reflective of the classroom assignments that students have with one of their teachers or our course enrollment. So this would be a combination of the entire number of professional staff divided by the number of students that we have to give you that ratio that you're seeing, which you can see, as Dr. Dietrich indicated a little while ago, we were at a period of time in 2010, 2011, where we were living with vacancies. As our enrollment, as well, has steadily increased from that period of time through the present in the year 2014, we have seen an increase in the number of students to the staff, a slight increase.
Slight increase. We're also living with vacancies, too, so you can see that it's just up a little. It was a low of 12.44 professional staff per student, excuse me, students per professional staff, and now it's 13.28.
This is a simple line graph that demonstrates the number of students on that top green bar, as well as the number of professional staff or teachers that we have in the district for each of the years.
You can see there's some variation, 12,561, but back in 2008, with 1,000 staff members, teachers, and then, you know, some variation, fairly steady there. We're down now to 959 in 2014, but our student numbers are at 12,731.
We're demonstrating here our years of service for our administrative team, based on five-year increments, as you move across the graph, with those having 35 years or more, all the way down to our newest members, which number about 20, who have been with the district in a period of time from zero, meaning they've started this year through, up into, including about a five-year period of time. A similar slide for those of our professional staff, you can see, once again, moving from a 35 and over year mark with very few of our individuals in that framework, all the way through and including the current hires this year, representing that last bar on the far right. Majority of our staff members, we're blessed and experienced by having them be in the ranks of anywhere from being newly hired through about a 20-year mark, which that substantiates about three-quarters of our teaching staff, which gives us the longevity with them, the ability for them to be able to master concepts and be professionally developed to give our students the best opportunities that they possibly can. Similarly, you see the years of service for our support staff, the instructional support staff, and here you have, again, the graph in a similar format, from 35 years, more on the left side of the axis, all the way down to our newly hired staff in that zero to five-year mark. Our ASOP fill rate is really our subfinder. The ASOP is the software program that the district uses in order to summarize, capture, and fill the needs for substitute vacancies within the district among our professional staff. So you can see the five-year historical perspective there. Obviously, the goal is always to have 100% fill rate, which means that there's always a person in the position for which it's needed. We can see that we're demonstrating a slight decline still in, above a 95th percentage rate, which is excellent, and in comparison to some of our other Montgomery County schools and across the state and nation, we do know that there is a slight concern with regards to the availability of substitutes as a result of people leaving college and coming out into the profession and wanting to be in the profession of education. So right now, we are seeing a slight decrease. Some of that also, in our investigation, has to do with us hiring many of our subs into our permanent positions.
So that's important. We've talked about it at the cabinet level. We want to make sure that we can replenish our substitute teacher ranks. There was a decline in participants in teacher education programs across our Commonwealth, and we're seeing that reflecting in fewer people applying to get on our sub list with the hope eventually securing a teaching position. So we're down in subs. That's a fact. We did move up our sub rate by $5 last month, and we're going to redouble our efforts to be able to attract more subs to come to our school district, have some outreach programs to try to get more people on the sub list, because we do want to have as frequently as often filled by a substitute rather than having to have internal coverage where somebody is pulled from something else in order to cover for an absent teacher.
And that will be demonstrated in the next slide, I believe, Dr. Dietrich, where we have the number of subs on ASOP represented over the last five years. Again, the green bar represents the total amount of substitutes that we have available to us in both the professional or teaching areas, as well as then, in yellow, the instructional support staff. That would be indicated. I believe in your handout, it's indicated that way. So our red are our teaching and professional staff. The green is the instructional support staff, our assistants, the aides in classrooms, supporting our learning support students. So you can see that relatively stable, but some decline, most significantly between last year and this year, in both areas of our professional staff, and then that contributes to the overall decline with the number of substitutes that we are able to work with on any given day available to us.
So at 12, 13, we were 279 teachers in the sub list. Then we went up to 300. Now we're down to only 220, and we're working hard to be able to increase the number of teachers on the sub list. And this is a great example of something we talk about at cabinet, in terms of sub coverage and making sure we have qualified individuals in there in the event that a teacher needs to be absent from his or her classroom.
This slide demonstrates the number of instructional professionals that have been hired in any given year, referring specifically to our teaching staff. The LTPDs are those individuals who are hired for a period of less than 90 days within the district. The LTSs are those people who are hired at a point of 90 days or more. And then our TPEs are temporary professionals and/or our tenured professionals are demonstrated in green. So you can see that the increase is there for this most recent school year. Number of instructional support staff hired is demonstrated on this slide. Again, an increase and a rise. These would be our classroom assistants, special education assistants, our transportation assistants, those people who are providing direct support and service to our students in classrooms and in instructional environments.
Okay, that will conclude Cheryl's part of the presentation, and Christine, I think this one's your slide.
Yes, the goal in our AV turnaround is 24 hours. We would like to have everything fixed for our classrooms. You'll see the spikes that we have, a lot of those are for the summer. That's when we get our work orders in at the end of the school year, and we don't necessarily go right to them. We work on larger projects and get to them by the start of the school year. Right now, our turnaround time is 2.26 days.
And Dr. Lutcher? Robin?
Yes. The first slide deals with what we identify as critical systems, and those are software applications that are critical to the district running smoothly each day. We define critical time based on industry standard as the amount of time that the software is up and running. Our time is between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. It does not include time that a system is taken down for routine maintenance, or there's a power outage, which is beyond our control, or sometimes we have a squirrel chew through some fiber out there, and that's beyond our control. We look for our uptime to be industry standard based on 5/9s, which is 99.999, and in many instances, we achieve that. These are not the only systems, but these are identified as critical systems that we monitor. And in monitoring, when a system goes down for any reason, we log the time it goes down, the time it comes back up, the problem that we have with it, and the resolution for it so that we have that knowledge base going forward.
Those are applications. You can see there, eSchool Plus being an application, Finance Plus, our grade book, Teacher Access Center, iEP Plus, our SQL Server, Elementary Teacher Access Center, School Wires, which would include our website applications, things like that, School Messenger, the way we contact folks if there's an emergency, or if there's critical information we wanted to know about, an upcoming event we want them to know about, and then the exchange, which would be like our Microsoft Exchange.
That is our email system.
Email.
This is the total number of work orders that we see within the department, and we just monitor the number that come in. Again, for 14, 15, any of the data that's listed on my slides for the current school year is through December 2nd. So you see that we have an increase in work orders over the past several years, and I would expect this year to be as much or in excess what we had for 13, 14. The reason for that is, I would imagine, twofold, in that we have an aging population of inventory. Most of our inventory is seven, eight, or nine years old, and the comprehensive plan addresses that in replacement over the next three years. The other reason we're seeing that is, we don't know if we have work orders unless things are being used, and we know that technology is being used more in the last several years. So as teachers are using it or go to use it, they identify if there's a problem, and the number of our work orders are increasing. This is the average time to complete a work order, and this is in days, and you can see we do have an increase. We have an increase in the amount of time that it's taken from one year to the next. I would attribute that to, number one, the number of work orders increasing, and also that we are, with our technical assistance staff, down 10% with living with vacancies. So a lesser number of people taking care of more work orders has translated into a little bit of an increase in the amount of time it's taking to complete it. These are the hardware repairs, and again, we monitor this in making decisions as to, is it time to replace? And are the number of repairs and the money that we're using for repairs, is that, are we at the point of time where it's costing us more to keep the inventory that we have? And as you see, we're looking at desktops and laptops, monitors and printers. I have a great concern with desktops and laptops, and so you'll see those addressed in the comprehensive plan because those have increased tremendously over the last several years as far as the number of repairs. And when we have laptops and desktops down, we're affecting, negatively affecting instruction and productivity. This is a simple bandwidth chart. We get this per month from our internet provider, which is Comcast, and what this does is it tells us where, what the amount of bandwidth that we're using month by month by month. We get this in a 60-day interval, and it's actually sent to us in picture format, which you have here from Comcast. And we monitor this over the years, and we analyze it so we know when we have to increase the amount of bandwidth. When I started with the district in 2008, November 2008, we were at 30 meg for our bandwidth, and we went to 50, then we went to 100, and now we're at 1 gig. So we have monitored this over the years and made the decision to increase that because of the amount of data and internet access that has been critical to digital instruction in the classroom.
And you won't find this in the handout. This was one that actually I had cut because of the length of the presentation, and you might find a few more here that we didn't plan to talk about tonight. Another up, we can talk very briefly, but I think we're going to go quickly through the ones because of an interest of time. Okay, the next one was Diane's.
Sure. We included some examples of the kinds of academic achievement data that we monitor routinely. This one is a representation of the fall kindergarten scores for the DIBELS assessment. DIBELS measures phonemic awareness, letter recognition, rhyming, those sorts of skills that we would look for in an incoming kindergarten student. And what we're trying to do in this is not just look at what's the baseline level of our students, but also look at, is there a difference between students who attended pre-kindergarten, students who didn't attend, or at least did not report attending pre-kindergarten, and looking at our students who are attending our schools that we're partnering with through the KTO grant? So this is something that we're monitoring over time to try to see if we are moving the needle on students coming to school more prepared to be ready for kindergarten. There's a number of graphs dealing with trends on PSSA. This one has elementary reading PSSA. Try to look at not just what's the overall percent proficient in advanced, but also what's the balance of students advanced versus students that are proficient, because we want to be sure that when students are proficient, we are still pushing to have them move up to being advanced, not just happy with them sitting at proficient. As you can see, as we've discussed at ECP, there's been a slight decrease in the percent proficient for elementary reading, which we're working to address through the curriculum review process that's going on this year for elementary literacy, and also through the implementation of the instructional shifts aligned to the PA Corps that the literacy folks have been very active in the buildings working on this year.
Yeah, you'll recall from previous discussions, Pennsylvania Core, coming out of the Common Core, has higher and more rigorous standards, which are reflecting in the tests.
Yes. So one thing that's important to note, too, is, when we put the 14, 15 data in here, it's going to be a different test. The test will be substantially different than it has been in the past. So it's going to be interesting to see, when we get the scores back this summer, how the performance compares to performance on the old test.
So we're in transition in that 13, 14.
Yep, absolutely. So we have middle school reading, which has remained roughly consistent, slightly higher than it has been in other years, and high school reading. Now, here's an example of where we had a transition, because in 12, 13- Now, here's an example of where we had a transition because in 1213, the state implemented the keystones. So it looks like a dramatic change in the number of students that are advanced, and it was, but the test is completely different than the old PSSA reading test, which is the reason why you see that shift. And in 1314, you see that we actually have the highest percent proficient of students at the high school in reading of any of the five years, even though it's a harder test, which is kind of interesting. Okay? Same kind of graph for elementary math. Again, you can see the last two years, a slight downturn in the elementary math percent proficient. We began implementing the Go Math curriculum in K-3 last year. We're doing 4-6 implementation this year. So we expect that since that curriculum is very well-aligned with the PA core, we'll see an increase in scores. When we looked at grade three alone last year, this is grades three through six combined, when we looked at grade three alone, actually the percent proficient was higher than in grades four, five, and six. So that gives us a good amount of confidence that we will see the scores come up with the implementation of the Go Math in four, five, and six. Middle school math, PSSA, again, has been roughly the same in terms of total percent proficient in advanced over the last few years, just under 90%. What's interesting there is, last year, we had a very large increase in this percent of students scoring in advanced, which was very nice to see. And again, we've just spent a couple of years revising the secondary math curriculum to be in line with the PA core standards. High school math, this again, 1213 and 1314, that's really the Algebra I Keystone exam. Again, you see an upward trend in terms of the total percent of students proficient in advanced. Elementary science, kind of bouncing around 90 to 92%. Middle school science, had that little dip in 1112, but again, has been in the upper 70% range for the last five years. And the Keystone, the high school science for PSSA would be the first three years, the Keystone Biology for the last two years. And we, of course, as we've talked about, are just so pleased with the high school science, PSSA, I'm sorry, Keystone Biology achievement. It is literally in the top five in the state. And we were so pleased to have the high school recognized with the Governor's Excellence Award Grant for that achievement. This is an example of another one of our benchmark reading assessments, the grade assessment. What we're trying to look at is, it's scored in STANIN. If you're not familiar with STANIN, STANIN 1 is the lowest level of achievement, STANIN 9 is the highest level of achievement. Looking to see from year to year, do we have more students in the upper STANINS, less students in the lower STANINS? This test also allows us to measure growth truly, the way the PVAS measures growth. And I don't have it included in the presentation tonight, but part of what we're looking for on this assessment is, over successive years, do we see students making the amount of growth in literacy achievement that they should be? And then same thing with the middle school, with the grade assessment. Again, looking to see that we're increasing the number of students in the upper STANINS and decreasing the number of students in the lower STANINS. The implementation of the new seventh grade reading curriculum this year, we are anticipating, will help to boost the growth in that particular area. Another thing, of course, we look at is the performance of the students on the SAT exam. As you can see, at North Penn, we are very pleased that our SAT scores not only exceed the Pennsylvania average, but also the national average significantly. And as you can see, the mathematics score has actually went up this past year fairly significantly. With a school our size, a change of about six or seven points is considered a significant difference from the previous year. Same thing, number of national merit scholars. We were so pleased this year to have so many national merit scholars, semifinalists, and commended students. You can see compared to previous years, we had a large increase in the number of semifinalists and the commended students. There's only other one other year where we had that many commended students and I think that's really a testament to the achievement levels at the high school. Same thing, we've been monitoring the number of AP exams administered, trying to encourage more students to challenge themselves with AP courses. And you can see over the past five years, the number of AP exams administered has increased very significantly, which has also been recognized by the College Board. We were looking, starting to look at absences because we, if you recall, we implemented the attendance improvement plan process last year to try to be very proactive about solving student attendance issues early rather than waiting until students are absent many times before we address it. So we were looking to see what percent of students have 0 to 10 absences, 10 to 15 absences, and so forth. If you think of it, why pick those numbers? There's 180 days of school. So 18 absences would be 10% of the school year you weren't there. So what we're trying to do is get as many kids down in that 0 to 10 column as possible. And you can see when we compare 1213 to 1314, we do have an increase of students in the 0 to 10 column and a decrease of students in the other higher absence bands. And then if we look at the secondary, it's not there. If we looked at, if we had the secondary in there, that's okay. There's an even more dramatic difference in the number of, yep, it's actually, it's in your packet, even though it's not in here, it's in your packet following that. The difference at secondary is actually rather dramatic in terms of proactively solving reasons why students are being absent, which prevents them from being absent later on.
Not quite sure why that slide didn't appear. That was not one we intended to reduce the length of this presentation by removing, but nevertheless, it's in your handout.
So, you know, and of course, that's important because if kids aren't here, they're not being taught. So we'll keep monitoring that. We also want to look at doing some similar monitoring with discipline data as well.
Okay, Jenny, would you like to speak to some of these slides on special education?
Yes, thank you. The first piece of data that I'm going to speak to everyone about tonight has to do with least restrictive environment, or LRE, data. And what that has to do with is that Pennsylvania Department of Ed mandates that we have at least 65% of our students who have IEPs or are in special ed, that they be included in regular education classes for 80% or more of the day. And the philosophy behind that is that all students, including our students with disabilities, need access to the rich and rigorous curriculum that we offer to all of our students in North Penn. So we monitor this through our December 1st child count. And what that is, it's a snapshot file. So we take a snapshot of any student who is currently enrolled as of December 1 with an active IEP and we submit that data to the state. And that's how we actually receive our funding through IDEA grant from federal government. So this is our LRE data over time. The target, again, is 65%. Last year was the first year that we were above that target. We had made some strides in terms of just working with administrators, increasing awareness. This year, we're really projecting a sharp increase. We've done a lot of work with our teachers. We've started a special education and inclusion task force, which we're very proud of. We actually have over 90 individuals who are teachers, regular ed, special ed, assistants, administrators, parents, who are all coming together to work on this issue. And because we do have these students with disabilities in our classrooms and we want to make sure that we're serving them effectively. This is the other indicator that the state monitors and this is our percentage of students who are in a regular education classroom, less than 40%. And you can see that as the other numbers gone up, this has consistently gone down, which is good because these are typically our students who have more significant disabilities. And one of the things that we've been trying to do more over time is involve them in the life of the school, however they can be involved. So perhaps they can't participate in the regular ed curriculum for language arts, but maybe they can for music or phys ed and really just working on getting them into regular education as much as possible and as much as appropriate for each student. This slide shows, building by building, the LRE percentage from 201213 to 201314. We will have the 201415 data shortly. We did just submit that to the state. But you'll see that every building has increased. Inglewood was one of our elementary schools that went to a fully inclusive model, so they have all of the students that are in their school with IEPs who are in regular ed for 80% or more of the day. Now, I will say with Inglewood, it's a smaller building. They do not have any of the specialized programming like autistic support, multiple disability support. So that's not something that I would expect to see in every building. However, it is noteworthy that for that population, which mostly serves students with learning disabilities, they've really made some great strides there. Our out-of-district referrals by type, these are our students whom have very significant needs and we cannot program for them within the district. One of the great things, I think, about North Penn is that because we have such a large district, we're able to provide most of our services in-house. So students don't need to spend a lot of time traveling to other placements and they're educated in their communities with their peers. We're actually well below the state average of students who are placed out of district. At North Penn, we're about 2.4%. The state is over 4%. So you can see we've remained relatively stable over time around the 75 mark total students. So that's 75 out of about 2,100 students with disabilities in the district who are in out-of-district placements. This will show you the percentage of special education enrollment by disability. And what I want you to remember is it's the percentage. So when you see that specific learning disability chart that's going down, it's not necessarily that we have less students with learning disabilities, but we have more students with other types of disabilities like autism that are pushing that percentage up and the learning disability percentage down. And the autism population is the one where we're seeing the most growth and I will address that in the next slide. So you'll see over time, since 2010, we had 207 total students diagnosed with autism. As of last year, we had 245. So that was a 37-student increase over four years, which for a low, lower incidence disability like autism, that's pretty significant. We also have caseload requirements that's set by the state. So a student who is in an autistic support class can have no more than eight students in the class at the same time and that's something that's set by PDE. So we have had to increase. We have opened up some additional autistic support classes over the last several years. But again, I think that's why you'll see that our out-of-district numbers aren't as high because as we've seen that need, we have provided the services internally. Kurt, I believe you can go through the next two slides as Dr. Holban addressed those. Those were ones we cut. The Wilson reading data, that is one intervention that we started putting in place, I think, in 2011. And what we noticed was we had a lot of students with IEPs who were not responding to the typical intervention. So we would look at the core curriculum, things through RTII. We had a population that, that still wasn't working, so we needed something else. And Wilson reading, it really is the gold standard in reading for students who have decoding needs, so needs specifically with phonics, breaking words apart, putting them back together. It's an intensive training program for the teachers. They go through a year-long certification process. They have an online course they take. We have nearly 60 of our teachers trained in that. And this slide will show you for the students who are identified, which is a small population overall, about 150 district-wide, but for those students, it really is an effective intervention. One of the ways that we support our least restrictive environment and meeting those mandates is through co-teaching. And co-teaching is where we have two educators who are in the class at the same time, working with students with disabilities and without disabilities. So what we started doing this year was, when administrators are doing observations, we're tracking the type of model that's observed. And for that purpose, it's really for us to figure out where we need to target our professional development. So this shows you the different models of co-teaching. Right now, we're about 50% of the one teach, one assist, which is where one teacher is taking the primary role and another teacher is assisting, working with students, circulating the room, who have more significant needs. The purple that you'll see is the team teaching and that's really where two teachers are sharing equal responsibility. Can't really tell who's the special ed teacher, who's the regular ed teacher. And what we would like to see happen over time is that we see that blue part of the graph decrease and we want to see the other parts increase so that we're having some more shared ownership between special education and general education. Now, this was in the beginning of the year, so when we have our new co-teaching pairs that are just starting to develop and establish those relationships, I would expect to see a little more of the one teach, one assist than we'll see later in the year, but we do hope to move that so we have more team teaching going on.
This is an expectation I, as superintendent, have put out there very clearly to our teaching staff and one that they're working very diligently then to meet my expectation.
Okay. Did you want me to go over this?
Quick question from the previous slide. What's the difference between team teach and parallel teach?
Sure, I can explain the different models. The one teach, one assist, I'll just go right down the list, is, as I said, one teacher's teaching, another one is kind of circulating the room, making sure that everyone's on task, helping students in need. The one teach, one observe is where there's direct instruction that needs to be delivered. One is primarily delivering the instruction while another one is kind of looking on during that period. Alternative teaching would be when one teacher takes a group, most of the class, to work on this typical skill that they're teaching, whereas the other teacher pulls a smaller group to discuss and reinforce concepts the students are struggling with. The team teaching, as I discussed earlier, was that equal back and forth ownership in the classroom. Station teaching would be when there are various stations set up throughout the room that students circulate through. Most likely, two would be teacher-led and one station would be some type of independent work. And the parallel teaching is when two teachers are teaching the same thing, but with two different groups of students, so that they're going over the same concepts, but if it's, if something lends itself to being discussed in a smaller group. This next slide, last year, we started an emotional support program for students who have anxiety and depression. What we found and what you might notice in our out-of-district referrals is we had an increasing number of students who were referred to partial hospitalizations or mental health programs and they were getting an extremely high level of support, residential in some cases. And then they come back to school and we don't necessarily have a safety net for them. So what we did at North Penn High School was, the idea was really to shrink the size of the building for our students who are in a more fragile state when they're transitioning back from some of those hospitalizations and to avoid the out-of-district placements. So it's really a bridge program where we have an emotional support teacher who is highly qualified in multiple content areas. She works with the students and then they are pushed back into regular ed slowly as they, as they can. We also have a behavior specialist, a dedicated guidance counselor for that program, some mental health supports that are in place so that we're keeping these students in district and we don't have to necessarily refer them out when they are coming off of a hospitalization. And I believe the ESY and the ABA were deferring. Tuition dollars to charter schools, this is clearly an area of concern for us. We do pay more for a special education student that's sent to a charter school than regular ed and you'll see over time that that number has been increasing. You can go to the next slide. And then finally, what we looked at was our special education legal fees over time. And one of the things for students with disabilities, they have additional legal protections and there are very stringent guidelines that need to be followed in terms of compliance, substantive, and procedural. And so there are additional rights where parents may go and seek an attorney if they feel that those rights have not been met. So you'll see that there's been a very steady decline over time in that. And I think first and foremost, we've always had a quality program, but we've been doing things to address the needs as they're arising, like the Wilson reading, like the emotional support. So we've been more proactive rather than reactive and I think that that has a lot to do with it. Also, I think this is very noteworthy, our number of due process and mediation requests have dropped dramatically since 2008. And 2008, I've been in the department since that time and what I've also seen is a shifting philosophy among our administrators, special ed supervisors as well, and really trying to work with families and recognize that parents, they really do have their child's best interests at heart and maybe we don't agree on how that need can be met, but if we're building those relationships with them, then we're less likely to end up in these situations where we're going to due process and mediation.
So that represents data that we monitor, we discuss, and as I said earlier, it was not our intention this evening to get into a lot of detail on the particular numbers in those charts, but however, for you to get a taste for the things we are monitoring and please take along the hard copies, mark them up in terms of those you'd like to have additional discussion at the committee level. And I do encourage participation from community members in our committee process. It's an important way the board operates. We do have an education community policy committee and they meet each month and discuss matters that pertain in those areas. We have a We have a support services committee that meets, meets each month, and they discuss matters of support services. So you saw some data in that regard. We also have the finance committee. As I said, we didn't get into very many of those slides this evening, but we'll have more presentation on the finance committee's activities, you know, in committee and in our future work session. Likewise, then we have folks working on safe schools. We just met last evening and, you know, talked about that. So there's a lot going on with committees, and we encourage you to attend committees and get involved if you're our community members watching this on cable television or here this evening. Are there any questions from board members at this juncture? If so, we can certainly entertain those. If not, we would, again, urge you to discuss this at committees.
All right. Then it would be time for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and address, and address the audience of citizens.
Good evening, and I want to welcome you all back. We're beginning a new year, and I'm sure it's, it's going to be challenging. And this presentation was a tremendous amount of information. And for the average person in the district to be able to assimilate all what's going on here, it is pretty much of, it's, it's an overloaded situation, but I know everybody here is very, putting their absolute best in making the presentation that they did, and providing the stakeholders, taxpayers, everybody participates in this district, to be able to come together and turn out one of the finest student bodies in the Commonwealth. And I want to thank you for all the work you do. Oh, yes, my name is Bill Pacheco. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Landville, Pennsylvania. And good evening. And we are now starting the new year with many topics and problems confronting the district. Our students, our employees, their concern, hopes, and problems yet to be solved. I want to report that the concussions, which is my personal topic, and I've been on this for a very long time, this has been in a great, we have made incredible progress. We had 10 concussions last year. It is now down to five this year. I did get this right to know, and I always give up a follow-up so that the public can be knowledgeable, well, how we're doing in this, because it is a serious medical problem. And there were 105 players starting, there were 93 that finished the season, and the concussions were five. That is my, the other were injuries and, when you get in a collision sport, I assume that you are going to have, you are going to have some type of medical problems. But I want to thank Don Ryan, and, and Bill Bartle, and Dick Beck, and everybody that was involved in the football. I didn't think it was possible to get down to five, and I had requested a 50% reduction in concussions. It is possible that if everybody is cognizant about, wow, we have to be really careful about this, because we want to have our players leaving the district, going on to college or whatever they're going to do, to, to know what, what to do, what they have had, and, and to be more careful than I think that they were in the past. So that is really incredibly good news, and I'm, I'm really happy to report that. This was my goal, and it did happen. Much thanks to Don Ryan, Bill Bartle, and the coaches and the players themselves. Five is still a problem, because in 10 years, that would be 50 kids that would have concussions. And we really don't know the ramifications of repeated concussions, and how that works into adult life. And the scientific community, medical community are just realizing that there are ramifications. The military is finding out PST and concussions that are suffered in the IEDs. We really don't know the full outcome of this, but this problem is, is coming to the forefront of the public's knowledge, and we'd like to, you know, to know what's really going on with this. And in the scientific information that's being really, revealed to us, we're gathering more information, and more information is always good for assessing what we need to do. We heard of the hazing that was accepted in the past, but not tolerated now. That was something that was going on, and finally, we have kids, or the parents, or whatever, said, we're not going to do this anymore. And that was all brought to light, and I don't think that'll ever happen again, because that, that problem has been rectified. Not here.
Yeah, not here, thank you. Let's make sure we clarify that for the listening audience.
And you know what? I am so glad, and I, I would assume that a district like North Penn, we wouldn't have a problem like that. So that's a, that's a thing to be really joyous about. The youth are now objecting, are voicing their objections to things that were just the norm, excellent, and no means no. Finally, we are entering our year with over $100 million in debt. We have employees that have a wonderful compensation package, medical, positive work environment, with an above-average student body, intellectual, physical. We're very lucky. We have really good resources to work with. Other districts, they really have big problems. I speak tonight for all the taxpayers, the business owners, especially our seniors that are on fixed incomes with rates of savings that are near zero, very challenging. When you raise our taxes, I trust it is with savings that are, that are brought about after rigorous scrutiny of our present spending, how many students we have, our ratio of teachers to students, the problems that we're, we have to be really careful about the way we allocate each dollar that we take from every stakeholder in this district. Those dollars do not come very easily. And many of the senior citizens, they have pulled this wagon a very long time, and they would like to stay in their houses and not be taxed out of their homes, as they are in some districts and some parts of the country. It's a very sad story. I hope that bringing all our students' body along is, I know this is a difficult, difficult job to bring all this, all the students along, and we do want everyone to excel to the best that they possibly can do, but I know how difficult it is. And, and after four years, this is my conclusion, after four years, I hope that many of our former grads are finished their baccalaureate degrees, but I fear that many have left for many reasons, financial being one of them. The cost of college education is really, really going up tremendously, and my son who is in college has lost a number of students. No white knight came along to save them. There were no, no scholarships offered, they had to quit. So it's, it's pretty serious. And I mean, our graduates, those that leave here with the best intentions, go to institutions, and are forced to drop out, it's a tremendous loss for our country. So, you know, that's something that, that the students have to be aware of when they reach for these goals, dream big, it has to be realistic, that they can be accomplished. I hate to see people drop out for reasons other than, you know, that, something that's come up. And, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Our next meeting will be Thursday? And motion to adjourn this meeting? All right. See you then. That's it.